Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Maryville Town Council meeting for today, Tuesday, July 26th.
I didn't see you.
6:30 PM. Please stand for a moment of silence and our invocation first.
Let's pray. Oh God, our Father, what a joy to come before you every time the opportunity is here. Father, tonight we gather again to conduct the business of this community. And Father, we just continue to pray for wisdom and knowledge and guidance. Father, as you know, how to bless this community, and you have done that in so many ways. We thank you, Father, for the protection that you continue to provide for those who serve and for those who are even behind the scenes doing so many things. Father, we give you thanks, and we offer all this to you, seeking your guidance for tonight, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Here's your main standing for a moment of silence. Thank you. Are there any veterans in the audience tonight? Would you both please start the pledge for us? Lead us in the pledge.
With allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Thank you, everyone. Madam Clerk Treasure, would you please call the role of the council?
Certainly. Councilwoman Span.
Present.
Councilman Hardaway.
Here.
Councilwoman Minchuck. Councilwoman Usulak.
Here.
Councilwoman Pettit.
Here.
Councilwoman White.
Here.
And President Bella.
Here.
All present.
All present. Thank you, Madam Clerk Treasure. Tonight, moving on to petitions, communications, acknowledgements, and remonstrations, our first item is a proclamation recognizing a HEPA centennial anniversary. I'd like to call forward to the podium Nick Caveras and Andrew Karris. And I'll say Tikaneis.
Kydis. Kydis.
Hala.
Do you have a copy?
No, I don't.
Oh, let me get that for you.
Want me to bring it?
Go ahead, sir.
Okay, Town of Maryville proclamation, State of Indiana, the Town Council of Maryville recognizes a HEPA centennial anniversary. Whereas, the American Hellenic Educational Progressive Association, Order of a HEPA, was founded July 26, 1922, in Atlanta, Georgia, to help unify, organize, and protect against the bigotry, discrimination, and defamation faced by people of all ethnic, race, and religious backgrounds perpetrated predominantly by the Ku Klux Klan. And whereas, the Gary, Maryville Chapter Number Seventy-Eight was chartered in the city of Gary, Indiana, on July 22, 1925, and since that time has promoted the ideals of ancient Greece, which includes philanthropy, education, civic responsibility, and family and individual excellence through community service and volunteerism. And whereas, since its inception, a HEPA has instilled in its members an understanding of their Hellenic heritage and awareness of the contributions made to the development of democratic principles and governance in the United States and throughout the world, and has done much throughout its history to foster American patriotism and...
Whereas, the HEPA National Housing Program has sponsored safe and dignified affordable housing to vulnerable senior citizens administered by the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. Section 202 Supportive Housing for the Elderly Program that has yielded 4,467 units in eighty-seven communities across nineteen states, including thirteen communities in Indiana, and whose headquarters is located in Fishers, Indiana. And whereas, President George H.W. Bush cited a HEPA as one of America's thousand points of light. And whereas, the HEPA Gary, Maryville Chapter Seventy-Eight has made a positive impact in the Maryville community by building and operating six apartment complexes comprising of three hundred homes for local low-income seniors, are a major supporter of the Ross Township Food Pantry, serve a major supporter of the vibrant parish of St. Constantine and Helen Cathedral Church located in Maryville, support the Maryville Police and Fire Departments, Maryville High School and Community Athletics, and recognized multiple times in the United States Congressional Record for its good works in our community, and has donated over $250,000 for local, regional, state, and national charities over the last twenty years. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Town Council of the Town of Maryville, Indiana, does hereby proclaim July 22, 2022, as a HEPA Centennial Day in the Town of Maryville, and invite all residents and visitors of our town to note and honor a HEPA for this momentous occasion, and to thank all of the officers and members of the HEPA Gary, Maryville Chapter Seventy-Eight for their dedicated service to all.
Mr. Minchuck, did you have a motion tonight?
I sure do. Motion to approve this proclamation.
Second.
I have a motion from Mr. Minchuck, a second by Mr. Hardaway, to approve the proclamation honoring the centennial and the very fine work done by a HEPA Seventy-Eight right here in our town. We couldn't be prouder of you guys. Any other discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. Motion carries.
Thank you, gentlemen.
The, uh, I want to head and give you a praying proclamation here. And we do have a check for you. It's a fake check, but it represents a $1,500 donation to your organization.
Eagle.
And a fifty-dollar check.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for all that you do.
Thank you.
I think that we deserve a round of applause for a HEPA.
Yes.
Moving on tonight, we have an engagement letter from Robert W. Bird and Company to provide sole book writing, managing, underwriting, or placement agent services to the town regarding the offering and issuance of a $2 million tax increment revenue bond, application note, series 2022.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion from Mr. Pettit, with a second by Mrs. Usulak for approval. Pat, anything to add?
This is part of the service associated with our recent $2 million bond, having to do with the new development, construction of infrastructure in and along the Mississippi Street Quarter as part of the silos at the Sanders Farm Project.
Thank you. Any other discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed?
Opposed.
One opposed. Motion carries. Moving on tonight, a letter from the Town Engineering Administrator endorsing Core Construction's recommendation to approve payment for application number three to various vendors for work completed at the Maryville Town Hall Conference Room.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Pettit, second by Mrs. Usulak for approval. Steve, is this what you just approved basically at the redevelopment commission meeting?
Yes, it is.
Any other discussion by the council?
Yes, Mr. President. What was the total amount of that? Because it looked like we kind of chopped it up a little bit and did it in sections. What was the total? Do you know?
I think you guys approved not to exceed 125, right?
Yeah.
Then we didn't exceed 125.
I don't think we're there. No, we're not.
Okay.
Close to that. Yep.
All right, thank you. No question.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have the letter from Town Engineering Administrator endorsing Core Construction's recommendation to approve payment for application number twenty-eight to various vendors for work completed at the Maryville Community Center, the Building Corporation Redevelopment Commission, MCC, requisition number fifty, review and approval for payment, and the Redevelopment Authority Redevelopment Commission, MCC, requisition number fifty-one, review and approval for payment.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Pettit, second by Mrs. Usulak for approval. Discussion? And again, these are companion motions to what was done at Redevelopment Commission.
Correct.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on tonight to the consent agenda, we have the Accounts Payable Register Voucher Approval for July 26th and the approval of the Town Council Meeting Minutes of July 12th.
So moved.
Motion by Mrs. Usulak.
Second.
Second by Mr. Hardaway. Questions or comments on the consent agenda? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carries. Moving on tonight to, excuse me, Standing and Special Committees in Budget and Finance, Mr. Hardaway.
Thank you, Mr. President. If I'm not mistaken, Trista, next week, we're going to start meeting with department heads? What day?
Uh, your preference, Wednesday or Thursday? Thursday maybe is better, before.
All of those states were on the original model that was sent to the department. Okay, we'll have a schedule out by the end of this week. Okay? Thank you. That's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you. Council Affairs, Mr. Pettit.
No report.
Public Works and Utilities, Mr. Minchuck.
Uh, nothing at this time. I'll be looking to get with Steve and some of his people to have a sit-down meeting before the next meeting to get some more things reported back to the council.
Elections, Public Relations, Town Beautifications, Mr. Pettit.
Uh, yes, Mr. President. We've got a, Pat, I don't see it, but we have a request from the Maryville School Corporation for a waiver of building permit fees. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Motion for approval, Mr. President.
Mr. Pettit, I think if we think back to our workshops, we talked about a 50%.
Fifty percent, and they pay the bill, and they pay the inspectors.
Well, that would come out of the 50% that they pay, right?
No.
No?
No. We've always, in the past, we've waived them completely 100% and still required them to pay the inspectors, HVAC, plumbing, electric, building.
That's...
My motion, as amended, will state that. Fifty percent reduction, they still pay all the inspectors. The guys get paid by the inspection, they're not on salary, it has nothing to do with the building fees. I mean, it does, but it's, I would prefer to see the guys get paid.
Of course.
So...
Mr. President.
We have a motion on the floor. Excuse me, Leonard. Is there a second?
Second.
Proper second by Mr. Hardaway. Open for discussion, Mr. White.
Yeah, I'm just trying to see in terms of when we say we're going to give them a 50% waiver, how much actually are we waiving? Because, you know, just to say 50% of a million is half a million. I'm sure it probably don't go that far, but I need a price here.
I think they were talking about what's the total estimated building that they were going to do, Pat, do you remember? Variety of buildings, multi-year program.
Yeah, the program was over five years, and I apologize, I can't recall the dollar amount. And one of our struggles was to be able to project out exactly what that amount was. But this is not something, as Councilman Pettit mentioned, this is not something new per se that the town would agree to do with the school corporation.
So is that 50% a year for five years?
No, it would be, let's, you know, here's an example. Let's say that that project cost per the information found in the Building and Planning Department is $100,000. Then the inspectors get paid, and then we would agree to waive 50,000 of that figure.
So, Mr. Pettit, correct me if I'm wrong, but in years past, I know when I was on the council in the past, we always waived 100% of fees for other governmental entities because in a way it was like just double taxing the residents because...
Churches as well.
The schools paying us, the taxes go to the schools, money comes back to the town. It's not, it's not working together, for sure. This year, we talked about it going only 50%, only because of the way that town finances are now, and we wanted to make sure we covered our office expenses.
Right.
Anything involved in actually generating the permits, sending out to inspectors, et cetera. So in a way, Leonard, this has been going on for decades in the town.
Sure.
I support the practice, and I plan to support this one.
Okay. I look at it a little different, Mr. President, in the terms of, you know, they are a corporation taxing entity. We had to look at it off our own dollars. They got dollars. And I understand you've been doing this. No, wait a minute, sir. I understand we've been doing this, but if we're talking about tightening our belt here, how can we continue to do this for the next five years? And I don't even know what the cost's going to be for the next five years. So if all of a sudden now, oh, we waived a million dollars, then I wouldn't be on board to that, Mr. President.
It's kind of like a tax abatement, you know? It's not money that we, costs us anything, so...
It's kind of like a give-back in a sense?
In a way. Not a give-back, but a reduction.
Okay, no more answers. Questions, sorry.
Any other discussion? Richard, any words of wisdom from Don, down to council a long time?
No, I'm, no. I agree with the 50%. That's, you know, that's where I'm at.
All right, all in favor of the reduction of 50% for the building permit fees for the Maryville School Corporation signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed?
Staying.
And one abstention. Motion carries, Mr. Pettit.
All right, thank you, Mr. President. The other item we have under Town Beautification is a invoice from Hubinger Landscape Corporation, the 93rd Avenue Planters seasonal maintenance. They've had to do some work out there, making those look good, all the way from Mississippi all the way to Tetaf Street where we installed those on 93rd Avenue. They're proposing $17,964 per season, building four monthly installments of $44.91. I would make a motion to approve the Hubinger Landscape billing for the planters on 93rd Avenue.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Pettit, second by Mrs. Usulak for approval of Hubinger to take care of our planters on 93rd Avenue. So Steve, is this something that you agree with, or can your public work staff handle the maintenance and landscaping there?
I agree with this proposal by Hubinger. Our public work staff, as everyone knows, we are shorthanded, and this is well above and beyond what we can handle since the upgrades were made to 93rd Avenue. They've done a fantastic job in the construction of the planters in order to keep the town looking good as well as the planters. I would definitely support, I would support this proposal.
Mr. President, just as a side note, I think Pat would concur with me that splitting this over four month quarterly payments, we can take one payment out of Mississippi Street Tiff, we can take another payment out of Broadway, we can take another payment maybe out of Maryville Road. It's not a lot of money. That corridor is the dividing line between us and Crown Point, and people see it when they come into town. So I think it's important to keep that landscaping up.
So just so the council knows also, in the discussion, Matt Lake did reach out to other companies that do similar work, and we just cannot even get quotes back. These companies are struggling with help, with supplies, with everything else, and Hubinger's been the only company that's willing to work with us right now, right, Matt?
Yeah, that is correct. We sent out several requests, and they were the only responsive quote that we received. Also, the first few years of establishment's the most critical for these types of plants and that particular environment as well. So they've already made some replacements as well, and they are very quick to respond when there's damage. We had a few cars hit the planters.
We have.
They ordered extra block and have it in stock for us, so they get out there right away and they replace that, just so it's not sitting there damaged. So it gets replaced right away, so.
Thank you, Matt. Any other discussion?
Yes, Mr. President. Is that a yearly contract, or is that...
It's just through the end of the year.
Oh, okay. So we'll be doing it every year? We'll reach out and do a proposal for it?
If we feel we need it, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so Mr. Pettit's motion was from July 27 through November 15. Is that right?
Yes.
Four months?
Yep.
An amount of $44.91 per month?
Yep.
And that would start on the 27th, tomorrow? Unless you wanted to water, did you want to...
Well, you know, I need some exercise, but I just, for another 17 grand, I'll make it work.
Thank you, Mr. White. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by, oh, this isn't really a contract. Do we need a voice vote? You want to call it? Let's call it. Roll call, please.
Okay. Mr. Span.
Yes.
Mr. Hardaway.
Yep.
Mr. Minchuck.
Yes.
Mrs. Usulak.
Yes.
Mr. Pettit.
Yes.
Mr. White.
Yes.
Mr. Bella.
Yes.
Seven in favor.
Seven in favor, a motion carries. Anything else, Mr. Pettit?
That's all.
Environmental Affairs, Mr. White.
Well, thank you. Um, let me open up my book here, because I got like four pages of stuff I'm going to read today.
Great, looking forward to it.
I wanted to start with our numbers here for today. Looks like the CDC's definition of how they're looking at things, and we're at the mid-range now, was at the mid-range two weeks ago. We have sixty-eight new admissions to area hospitals, 140 cases per day, and an increase of almost 38% from two weeks ago. We had a 17% positivity rate, and it's a 2.5% increase. So things are going up. I don't think they're out of, too far out of whack right now, but they're definitely going up. Marge, did you want to add anything to that?
All I could say is they definitely are on the rise. Our own President Biden, he's got COVID, and there's only about 55% of the nation, America, that is vaccinated. So we still need more people to get vaccinated, the last report I heard.
So are we still kind of like, this is for Pat. So are we Clorox and 360s? Because I know we're having a lot of events in the Dean Barbara White Center, and with this thing starting to get a little bit tamping up, I don't know if we need to be proactive with that, but I would suggest that from an environmental standpoint. I know they're having a big Jazz Fest coming up, sure there's been others. I'd just like to see it, you know, some type of proactive way instead of waiting till people actually get sick. So that would be my recommendation from the Environmental Committee. Okay, is this almost, that's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Personnel Policy and Employee Benefits, Mr. Hardaway.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, later on in the meeting, we will have a, look for an approval for our personnel, personnel policy manual for the, that will be effective August the 1st. Everyone had a copy of it. Everyone was able to review it and offer any changes to Mrs. Kathy Pettit, and so Mrs. Pettit is in the audience. So when we get ready to approve this, if she'll come up and if we have any questions, she'll be able to answer them at that time. That's all I have.
Thank you. Public Safety, Mr. Minchuck.
Uh, nothing specific at this time. I know the officers of the police department are pretty busy lately, so keep up the good work. I mean, you guys are doing what you can with what you got. Just a shout out to both the PD and the Fire Department. I know they've been showing up at a lot of our town events and participating very heavily in a lot of our ongoing things out there. They've been doing a great job. So keep up the good work, and we appreciate what you guys are doing.
One thing, Mr. President, I got a text, I think it was, from the fire chief, where they went to Impact Church, I think, today, and they're, what, you have a summer program? And the Fire Department went there today, and they had a nice picture of all of the kids and the fire personnel. That was, that was a good time. Looks like it anyway. That's all I got.
Mr. President, Costa and Steve, I need to get with you. We had our, what's been reported to me is our fourth accident at Madison and 76th, Jeff, where we moved the three-way stop down to the four-way stop, and I got a call from Mr. and Mrs. Congress. Costa, I'd like to get with you after the meeting, you and Steve, and see what we can do about that intersection. More warning signs, flashing stop signs, I don't know. I don't know what we can, people are just flying down Madison Street, unfortunately. So I'll talk to you guys after the meeting.
Mr. President.
Mr. White.
Yes, I'm going to direct us at the Chairman of the Public Safety Committee, Mr. Chairman of the, I wanted to actually convene a meeting with your committee, because there's a lot of things going on around here, specifically in the last ten days. We've had some shootings around here. Some of them weren't in the terms of injuries, but of course, you know about my own experience because I shared it with you. Then a week later, I get something from the police department saying there were three more shootings in one night, even though there weren't any injuries that night. It was definitely some damage out there, some homes and things of that nature. I would like to give a rosy picture of what's going on in Maryville, but these things are real, and it really got real with me when I experienced it somewhat myself. Additionally, talked to Mr. Costa, which he does a real good job of reaching out to us when something goes on in the community. Something happened last night in two places. I think something happened in your ward, Marge.
Yes, fourth ward.
Yes.
There was a shooting in the fourth ward, and the Assistant Police Chief Costa, he called me immediately in case, he calls all the time, just in case the residents hear something and they call me or they want to know what's going on with the police cars. Well, we are well informed by Assistant Chief Costa. Thank you.
You know, and the thing, Mr. President, I want everybody to understand here is that I'm out on the streets. That's just the way I am. I'm up and I'm about, and I ran into a guy and said, hey, these little guys out here are rolling. He said, we want the police to roll, but he said these other little guys are rolling. I know what he meant, but this was just a random conversation. So I'm just trying to say people need to feel safe, including me. And here those things at the street level, it really bothers me, and then to see things happening. I probably talked to Costa more times this past week than I have in the past year with him, and I appreciate that too, with him reporting. I think something happened in Richard's ward over there as well. So there's something going on out here. So this is why, Mr. Minchuck, I like to meet with your committee. I did talk to some officials in the city of Gary. They want to also talk to you about seeing that we can do something jointly to start hammering what's going on out here. My experience, basically, is that, yeah, we see a lot of police cars going up and down Broadway. I mean, they hammer Broadway, but you know, we got to get inside of the neighborhoods where the actual action is occurring. That's just been my experience, so thank you.
So, Mr. Minchuck, when's your next meeting scheduled for? Is it August 4th, was it?
August 4th, 4:00 PM.
So August 4th at 4:00 PM?
Okay.
As we've reminded the council members numerous times, you're allowed to attend any committee meeting at any time and voice your ideas. That's, we want that, so.
Sure.
Please.
Sure, I just want everybody to kind of be on, yes, I just want everybody to be on board with what's going on here. We need to get a handle on things, even if we got to get more, I know we can't hire more police officers, but there has to be a way we can get more officers on the street.
Right. Mr. White, we have an agenda here.
I understand that, but I'm, you know, that's still my talk time.
Rambling at the same...
Not rambling. It's not rambling. It's me continuing to talk. So I got a few minutes to talk, right? Okay, thanks. So August, what's that date again?
Public Safety, the Public Safety Committee meets the first Thursday of every month at 4 o'clock.
Okay. I will bring other individuals there that are interested in what's going on.
I just have to interject one thing very fast.
Mrs. Usulak.
Thank you. The Gary Police Department is going to be working with the Indiana State Police with their problems in Gary on the street. So I don't know if they'd have any interest in Maryville.
They have interest.
At this time.
They have interest.
That's my opinion and from what I found out.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Great. Moving on to Economic Development, Mr. Pettit.
Thank you, Mr. President. At this time, I'd like to make a motion to purchase the real estate located at 7150 Broadway in Maryville via eminent domain for the use as the Town of Maryville Dog Park that Councilman Minchuck's been working on. The Town Attorney is instructed to send the uniform land acquisition offer correspondence out as soon as possible following the eminent domain legal procedure. If we do not receive a response in the allotted time, then he is instructed to file a complaint to acquire the property via eminent domain. That's my motion for discussion, Mr. President.
Second. Motion by Mr. Pettit, with a second by Mr. Minchuck.
Mr. President, this is the, Joe and Pat have been working on this. We have two appraisals on this property. This is the infamous Mo's property, which is an absolute positive eyesore. It happens to be in Jeff's ward. I get the calls from the businesses across the street. We all see it driving down Broadway. We all had to look at it during the parade. It's absolutely ridiculous what this guy is doing, so.
Excuse me, Sean, but we're really purchasing it?
We're purchasing it for the dog park. It's too, it's too, right.
That's the public purpose.
That's the public purpose, yeah. So that's my motion.
And the address was 7150?
7150 Broadway.
Okay. Any questions or comments by the council? Anything else to add, Mr. Reardon? I know you've been working on this.
Nothing else at this time.
Okay. Hearing none. Madam Clerk, Treasury Roll Call, please.
Mrs. Spam.
Yes.
Mr. Hardaway.
Yep.
Mr. Minchuck.
Yes.
Mrs. Uselak.
Yes.
Mr. Pettit.
Yes.
Mr. White.
Yes.
Mr. Bella.
Yes.
Seven in favor.
Seven in favor. Mr. Pettit, your motion carries.
Thank you.
Anything else tonight?
That's it.
Parks and Recreation, Mrs. Uselak.
The parks are all up to par. I spoke with Torrance, I think, once or twice about the Rosenbaum Park, I believe. They did book that, correct? And that's about all I have to report at this time. Thank you.
Abandoned and blighted properties, Mr. Hardaway.
What do you report tonight, Mr. Rosenbaum?
Dean of Barbara White Community Center, Mr. Pettit.
Mr. President, we have a meeting scheduled for Thursday night up at the center at four o'clock. We're going to be discussing the Boys and Girls After School Program, some capital items that Steve and Tarrant and I need to go through, as well as any personnel issues he has up there.
Thank you. Special Projects, Mr. Hardaway.
Thank you, Mr. President. We've got the, we've got a couple of things. Next Tuesday is National Night Out. We will, from five, five P.M. to eight P.M., we're looking for a great time. We've got the apart, the parking lot will be quartered off for each ward. Each ward will have a section. We've got the faith-based group that's going to participate this year. We've got Impact Church, Christian Revival Center, Faith Temple down by Marge. And we also have New Ebenezer this year. That New Ebenezer will be providing hot dogs and hamburgers. Impact Church will be providing bouncy houses and games for the kids. And I spoke with the lady from Chasing the Dreams today, Chasing, Party Chaser, I'm sorry. And she's bringing the dunk tank that we're going to set up somewhere out there for those that wish to be dunked. We've got the county helicopter coming again. Don't make any challenges, Mr. President.
I'm adjusting my mic.
I see you gearing up there. We've got the county helicopter coming again this year. So, we're looking for a great time. We're asking all the council representatives to come out. And we'll have, we have one large map for people to look at to identify their ward, the ward that they live in. And then we'll have specific ward maps at each section. So, Steve, we'll get together about how we're going to install those. Mr. Lake was so gracious in having those printed out and having those made up for us. So, that, I think that'll take, we're going to meet this coming Thursday at ten o'clock to finalize everything that we need to finalize. So, anyone that wants to come to the meeting, more than welcome to come and bring your ideas. And we'll go from there on that. And don't forget on September, on August the seventeenth, we are going to, hopefully, we're going to go to, I know, MIS as a welcome back event for the schools. And we're still, did you hear anything back from Superintendent Brown as to Pierce, Mr. President?
Not yet, but I will follow up.
Okay, because, and we need, we're asking all department heads if you could let us know how many people from your department is going to show up to come out. But we encourage all department heads to please come out and be a part of this. It's always been a great event in the past. And all elect, any elected official that is available, we ask that you come out and be a part of this also. Right now, we know it's MIS and we don't know if we're going to go to Pierce or not. But we're looking for a great time there. Also, Mr. President, some of the town employees have been invited to go with the Salvation Army next week, August the first, as they shopping with the, taking some school kids shopping to, at Walmart. And the Salvation Army had a grant of fifty dollars per student. And so, we've got, I think, a hundred students, fifty students, I'm sorry. We've got fifty students, so we're going to take them shopping next Monday for school supplies.
Okay.
So, and I appreciate the invitation and I really appreciate some of the town employees said, yeah, I don't mind participating in that because I think it's a good cause. I think that's more than enough at this point.
Did you want to talk about the Job Fair? The success of the Job Fair?
I was going to let Mr. Reardon, when he does his report.
Oh, okay.
Talk about the success of the Job Fair.
So, all right, Sean, you have a big poster I said at your place should be around somewhere for that discussion later that we talked about. All right.
Okay.
Anything else, Richard?
No, that's all I have, Mr. President. Thank you.
Mr. Reardon, would you mind talking with the department heads about the seventeenth and coordinate that? It's just a morning event for the kids.
It's at, what is it, class, school starts at eight, eight-thirty? So, we...
Metal schools, so, yeah.
Yeah, I think it's eight-thirty for MIS. So, and I think that Pierce starts at a different time. So, we may be able to do both of them that day.
That's great. Thank you. Moving on tonight to Department and Commission Report, it's Lake County Solid Waste Management District.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Solid Waste District held a board meeting last Thursday. And I kind of brought something here to kind of let the town know exactly where they're at. I did ask the Director to come to the, Mr. President.
Go ahead, sir.
Okay, I asked the Director to come to, to our meeting and she told me to tell y'all to come down there and see her. She says because you'll get a chance to see the new building and things of that nature.
Be happy to.
As well, that they have put up the new Solid Waste District signs. You seen them?
I saw, it looks nice.
So, they're moving, and they also had refurbished one of the front offices. That was the office, that office is going to be available to whoever can afford to be there. So, that office is going to help pay for the one-point-two-million-dollar amount that we paid for that building. Under the new business, there was a, we had a RFP out, I'm sorry, RFP for Design and Construction of Environmental Education Area. And we were informed that the board, we were informed as a board that we were still operating under the Emergency Board Action approved in December. We did send out three RFPs to prospective companies and received one response from Attorney Jeff Qualenbusch, I think that's the name, so Barnes and Thunberg, who consulted on proper procedures of the RFP. He indicated that they're disappropriate and all proper procedures under the emergency declaration has been followed. So, what they want to do is they want to spend seven-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand dollars, which would be an additional, so I think the county would actually pretty much invest two million dollars in that site since, I would say, August of last year. Additionally, Mr. President, it was, it was an amount not to exceed the seven-hundred and seventy-five thousand. We also, we passed that motion by a voice vote, fifteen, fifteen and one, and was opposed by Councilmember Tippy, I think that's the County Commissioner. We had three resolutions. The first resolution for a one-year option for the tire recycling program, which I don't know, a lot of people probably don't know if that program still exists, but if you've got a couple of tires and they got that, that program in your community, you can bring your tires there. You don't have to throw them on the side of the road and we don't have to pick them up. We also did a resolution exercising the second one-year option of electronic recycling program. I think that's pretty much when people have the televisions and old computers and things of that nature. That's been extended for another year. And then we got an additional resolution exercising the second one-year option for the Household Hazardous Waste Program, which is given throughout the town, cities and towns in Lake County here. Okay, wow. So, additionally, we did a resolution transferring fines. We also had a proposed budget. We will not be filling Mr. Dugan's position as Director of Business Operation and Government Affairs. And staff will begin a three-percent raise and they'll be hiring a full-time manager, office manager. I think that's it. Oh, I'm sorry, this is the important one. Additional business was the South Lake Mall repayment. The district is currently liable for a hundred-and-seventy-four thousand dollars and that could rise to over four-hundred-and-seventy thousand dollars once all appeals are heard. I think what the, our controller, who is John Patelas, had made an idea in terms of, instead of just trying to just pay these people out at one time, we can either give them a credit or we can give them, put them on a payment plan. So, I don't know if you know about that, Joe, but that's what our controller made. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Yes, what do we have to do with the South Lake Mall?
Well, the Solid Waste District, Solid Waste District.
Oh, I thought you said South Lake Mall.
There was, yeah.
Okay.
Yes.
I understand. Thank you.
Northern Indiana Regional Planning Commission, Mr. Hardaway.
Thank you, Mr. President. We met last Thursday and there is a, the federal government has come out with a federal discretionary grant program. There's three programs. I will give the information to Mr. Reardon, anyone that's interested. One is reconnecting communities that have, has to do with transportation, safe streets and roads, and railroad crossings. I think we may find some interest here, Pat. So, I'll give you this information and you can share it with the rest of the council. That's all I have.
Thank you. Stormwater Management Resources, our director is Matt Lake.
Thank you. Yeah, we just finished a draft of our flood hazard ordinance. I'm going to send everybody a copy. DNR already reviewed it, Division of Water, they're happy with it. And this is just to maintain compliance with National Flood Insurance Program. So, everybody's eligible to get flood insurance. So, as a community and as a flood plain administrator, we have to maintain those standards. So, as a state changes their standards, we change ours accordingly. Doing some maintenance on Taney Ditch right now from Seventy-third to U.S. Thirty. And also just received word from the Corps of Engineers, we got our permit for our project on Taney Ditch for all the crossings. So, we'll put that up for bid real soon here. A lot of them are falling apart, so they need to be, you know, changed out and sized appropriately and they're all properly designed. So, it took a bit of permitting to get that through, through not only Corps of Engineers, but also through the DNR Division of Water. And we're doing some maintenance, we did some maintenance behind the Legion there. And then we're going to move on to Chapel Manor and get that segment done as well. And so, that's all I have. I got a bunch of other stuff, but I'll leave it for next time.
Okay, Matt, thanks. South Shore Visitors and Convention Authority, Mr. Reardon.
Thank you, Mr. Bella. I was unable to attend our meeting last week due to a scheduling conflict with our Job Fair. But I did have a chance to speak with President and CEO Iran about meeting with the Town Council. He welcomes the opportunity. So, we will be asking the council balance this week what your availability is to arrange a meeting between Town Council Leadership and the Visitors Convention Bureau. There's a lot of common ideas to discuss and, of course, the continuing conversation about a potential convention center as well.
Great, thank you. Fire Territory Board, Mr. Minchuck and Mr. Spam.
Our next scheduled meeting will be in September.
September?
Yes.
Thank you. Department Reports. Assistant Chief Costa.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to start off by thanking Councilman Minchuck for the recognition of our officers. This month has not been friendly to us. Just to give you guys an idea, we had four-thousand-six-hundred-and-two, I'm sorry, June, I stand corrected as June. The month of June was not very friendly to us. We had four-thousand-six-hundred-and-two calls for service. That's almost fifteen-hundred more than we had the month prior. I'm very, very proud of my officers. And that's really an understatement, the fact that they've been able to handle this with what they have and the circumstances. It's not a problem within the town. There seems to be some type of earth shift or earth tilt. And there is unrest throughout the whole world, throughout the country. It's like, almost like, I've said it before, like we're living in a bizarre world. But I'm very proud of them that they're handling it.
Great. Costa, did you want to just touch a little bit on your meeting, how it went with a state rep, Julie Althoff?
Sure. We met with Julie Althoff Friday and we discussed some of the hurdles that we're facing, especially in the financial area. Maryville has grown over the years, but we haven't really grown in the financial aspect of it for public safety. We discussed several options. Do you want me to go into detail with the options? Or you want to say that for another time?
No, go ahead.
So, one of the things that we were looking at, the insane amount of calls that we have been having at our hotels, our hotels are accounting for like twenty-two-hundred-plus calls for service throughout last year. It was two-thousand-two-hundred-and-eighty-eight calls for service, to be exact. And that's tying up our resources. So, ultimately, it's costing the taxpayer about, Maryville taxpayers roughly around a hundred thousand dollars for us to babysit the hotels. And one of the options that we're looking at is a public safety user fee. That would be a, it would be added on to whoever is coming in and renting or staying at the hotels or motels, rather. And it would be a one-time fee. And that's what, it would go back towards public safety and that would be of a great help. We also discussed the possibility of, of changing some things as the way, how the tax system works up here as well. But she's very, she was very receptive and very interested in helping us in meeting with you guys.
Great. Thank you, Chief.
Chief. Yeah, I just had a question for, in terms of the fees, had you figured out what that structure was yet?
Not yet. We're still working on it.
Okay, thank you.
Steve King, how's things in Public Works?
Public Works is extremely busy. We've been, our department's been helping out with all the great town events that the town's been planning and I'm very proud of what we've done. All the events have been great. Our road projects are ongoing for our paving program. We're here in town now, working right across the street and in the, in the subdivision, replacing curb and driveways. And we're headed, headed north. We should be up in Ward Two here very shortly, the next few weeks to start work up there. Residents will be notified by letter. That'll be done here very shortly. Our Broadway sidewalk program, east side of Broadway, the project's supposed to wrap up here in the next couple of weeks. We'll be wrapping that project up. We just purchased a final parcel that we needed for the west side of Broadway. We had a holdout with the, with the daycare center down the street. The check was sent to, to their bank yesterday, I believe. So, that parcel's going to be ours. So, that, that project will, unfortunately, is going to have to go next year because of that holdout. But it will be, it will be done next year. It's a locally funded project through the, through the RDC. And that's all I've got.
Let's talk about the NIPSCO transfer towers that are going up all over town.
Yes.
Super high.
Super high.
Ugly, all rusted out.
Yep.
Are they going to be covered? Are they going to be painted? What are those all?
That's, that's how they're going to look. Those are going up all over, not just in Maryville, they're going up all over the county. Those are switching towers. So, the, so, I was told so that NIPSCO can lessen their power outage. These, these are remotely controlled where they can switch power to turn it in a different direction to get the power where it needs to go to prevent power outages.
Okay.
Mr. President.
Mr. White.
So, we can't make NIPSCO pay to paint their towers?
No, I don't think so. Maybe like us trying to tell this train what speed limit they should go.
Yeah.
We just, the only certain authority we have.
I bet you we put an ordinance out there that says they have to do it.
Why don't you draft one up and we'll take a look?
I'll be glad to.
We'll spend about eight years in court defending that one.
I'd be careful, Mr. White, if you want more streetlights in Ward Seven.
Well, I don't have any right now, so...
Well, NIPSCO's, NIPSCO's the go-to, so I'd be careful not to bite the hand that feeds you.
I feed them pretty well.
Steve and I talked about this earlier in the week. I took some photographs of these towers and that's what sparked this conversation. I just, I wanted the residents to realize what they are and why they are, because they are huge.
They are.
And they're not real pretty.
No, no.
But they're here to stay.
Yeah.
And if we want power, we got to live with it, so...
It's for the benefit of everybody.
Yeah, it has nothing to do with, with us, town government, so...
It's for the benefit of, you know, all, all residents, so it's, it will help. Yeah. It's for the benefit of, you know, all, all residents, so it's, it will help.
If it's gonna help eliminate power outages, I think it's a good thing.
Yeah, for sure.
Because I mean, I know, I know some neighborhoods that were last week, excuse me, there was down in Gary that were out for over 24 hours. You know, whatever, whatever we can do to reduce the amount of time that people are without power, without having to invest in a generator, I think it's a good thing.
Kathy, did you have anything to add for Department head report or? No, okay. Terrence, Parks and Recs.
Thank you, Mr. President. On yesterday, the Lions Club had a celebration where they planted a Colorado blue spruce tree. It was a nice event. We're thankful for that, for them. Just a note, on last weekend, as Mr. Hardaway mentioned, there was a lot of storms. And so we had some debris down and some trees were down. So we were able to get that all cleaned up of our trails and different things like that. We have been also assisting and helping out with different things. One of the things with code enforcements in terms of properties, keeping their, the lawn mowed there. So out of the list that we had, we're happy to say that about, if we had 17, 14 of them went ahead and cut their, their grass.
Oh.
And so that left us about three to maintain and handle from there.
Wow, that's nice.
Yeah.
So three to four to maintain from there. Also, just of note, we did have a fender bender yesterday with a couple of employees. Thankfully, they are okay. And so we took care of the paperwork and the procedures from there. Thankful to HR and Public Works for assisting us in getting that taken care of. For the Dean and Barbara White Community Center, this Saturday night, we have a main event, MMA, that's gonna be at the center. This is our second event that we're hosting there of the MMA, so we're excited about that. And on Sunday, we have a Gospel and Jazz Festival that'll have food trucks, different things outside from 12 to nine.
Is that concert outside or inside?
Inside.
It is inside, okay. Thanks.
You wanna talk about the basketballs?
I'm sorry, yes, the basketballs are a gift from the Harlem Legends. We also have another one that's on order that's gonna be arriving here hopefully pretty soon. But they just wanted to say thank you for all the, for all the hard work in getting them here. And they had a great time, so that's from them.
Thank you.
Thank you, Terrence. Moving on tonight to general orders, we have ordinances for first readings, ordinance 22-19. It's ordinance amending the town ordinance 94-05 entitled, "An Ordinance of the Town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana, for the Establishment of a Maryville Town Court as it pertains to the closure of the Maryville Town Court and the orderly transition of cases and repealing all town code sections and ordinances or parts thereof in conflict within." Madam Clerk Treasurer, would you please read this one in its entirety for the record?
Certainly.
Thank you. It's not that long. 22-19, that's correct.
An ordinance amending town ordinance 94-05 entitled, "An Ordinance for the Town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana, for the Establishment of a Maryville Town Court as it pertains to the closure of the Maryville Town Court and the orderly transition of cases and repealing all town code sections and ordinances or parts thereof in conflict herewith. Whereas, the Town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana, in the coming years, is facing increased economic challenges as a result of the removal of the tax cap exemptions and must eliminate redundancy and increase efficiency as stated within the Kernan Shepherd Report 2007. And whereas, the Town Council of the Town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana, adopted ordinance 94-05, which established that the Town Court of Maryville and that it shall continue in its existence until abolished by the Town Council. And whereas, under Indiana Code, Section 33-35-1-1, states that during 2022, every, and every fourth year after, that a town may, by ordinance, abolish a town court. And whereas, the Town Council of the Town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana, desires to abolish the Town Court of Maryville and provide for the orderly and equitable disposition of pending cases. And whereas, the Town Council of the Town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana, desires to gradually eliminate the cases of the Town of Maryville, of the Town Court of Maryville, to allow for the absorption of those cases by the Lake County Superior Court System as established by this ordinance, while safeguarding the interests of the public. And whereas, the Town Court of Maryville will cease to exist on September 30th, 2022. Whereas, under Indiana Code, Sections 33-35-1-1, 33-35-3-1, and 33-35-3-7, the Town Court Judge shall be provided at the expense of the town, all books, dockets, papers, printed blanks, one clerk and his salary along with the clerk's salary until his term expires on December 31st, 2023. Now therefore be ordained by the Town Council of the Town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana, as follows. Section one, that pursuant to Indiana Code, Section 33-35-1-1, the Town Council of the Town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana, has the ability and shall abolish the Town Court of Maryville, and this court shall cease to exist as of September 30th, 2022, which shall be its last day of operation and existence. Section two, that as a result of the adoption of this ordinance by the Town Council of the Town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana, the following shall occur. A, all criminal cases have been filed in the Lake County Court System since January 28th, 2021, and no criminal cases shall be filed in the Town Court of Maryville after that date. B, all infractions cases shall be filed in the Lake County Superior Court System since January 28th, 2021, and no infraction cases shall be filed in the Town Court of Maryville after that date. Section C, all ordinance violations cases, OV's, shall be filed in the Lake Superior Court System starting September 30th, 2022, and no ordinance violation cases shall be filed in the Town Court of Maryville after that date. And D, the Town Clerk of the Town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana, and the Clerk of the Court for Lake County, Indiana, are instructed that the Town Court of Maryville will cease to operate as of September 30th, 2022, and should accept the filing of all, any and all criminal cases, CMs, infractions, IF cases, and ordinance violation cases, OV's, as consistent with this ordinance. Section three, that by the adoption of this ordinance by the Town Council of the Town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana, shall become effective after, one, a formal reading, two, formal discussion, three, public comment, four, a roll call vote, and five, upon its passage by this council, that notice of its adoption shall be immediately provided as follows. Number one, the Lake County Democratic Party, number two, the Office of the Lake County Prosecutor, number three, the Office of the Lake County Clerk, number four, the Office of the Lake County Court Administration, number five, Indiana Secretary of State, number six, Judge of the Lake Circuit Court, and number seven, Division of State Court Administration of the, of the Office of Judicial Administration. Section four, that under Indiana Code, Sections 33-35-1-1 and 33-35-3-1 and 33-35-3-7, the Town Court Judge shall be provided at the expense of the town, all books, dockets, papers, printed blanks, one clerk and his salary along with the clerk's salary until his term expires on December 31st, 2023. Section five, that if any section clause, provision, or portion of this ordinance shall be held to be invalid or unconstitutional by any court of competent jurisdiction, such decision shall not affect any other section, clause, provision, or portion of this ordinance. Section six, that all existing ordinances or parts thereof in conflict with the provision of this ordinance are hereby deemed null, void, and of no legal effect and are specifically repealed. Section seven, that this ordinance shall take effect and be in full force and effect from and after its passage and adoption by the Town Council.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion for approval of this ordinance 22-19 on first reading tonight.
So moved.
Second.
The motion by Mr. Pettit, second by Mr. Minchuck, for approval of ordinance 22-19, open for discussion.
I got one thing, Mr. President. I think in light of this ordinance, I'd like to see us suspend any hiring of anyone until we see where this shakes out and see if there's any of the court employees that would be like, be looking to fill some of these openings that we currently have.
Are you talking about lateral moves, Rich?
Yes. Yeah. So, you know, we've got some spots that need to be filled. And so rather than interview right now, I think that we'll just wait and see. And from court employees, if anyone's gonna be interested in moving out of the courts and into other town positions.
Okay, sure. I think there's seven employees full-time.
We're, that's, that's from, well, I don't know how many courts have.
Kelly pays them.
Judges here, but I don't know off the top of my head. I don't pay, payroll clerk pays them.
We've got some positions open in community center, public works. So I'd like to be able to offer those positions to the court employees before we go outside and, and start looking to interview people again.
That makes sense. Thank you for that. What I want to add is that, you know, this is not anything personal against Judge Velasco. He's only been the judge for two and a half years. This has nothing to do with that. This is simply mathematics. And we look at the math, and I sent you all a report, and Trista did a great comparison of what this has cost us. Right now, in the last 10-year period, we're looking at a negative $1.6 million. And when you offer a service to the town, granted, you're not supposed to look at what's this gonna cost. We don't look at the police department and say, "Don't go on calls anymore because it costs a lot of money," granted. But what we're doing here with the town court is, is offering duplicate services that are being done just three miles away at the county building, which can continue without any interruption of residents, service to residents. So when I look at the mathematics, this seems like the right thing to do. Plus, it really supports the council members who voted on this last time in 2019, before Mr. White and I came back on the council. So we just can't continue sustaining these losses. Last year alone, the loss was $399,000. That doesn't make sense to just have a town court. So that's where I'm coming from. That's my comment on it. Anything else?
Mr. President, the, the only thing that I would note is that I understand why the September 20th date, because it's budget time. I mean, September 30th date, because our budget's due on October 1st. But considering that there's still pending litigation and it's gonna take a little bit of, it usually takes a lot more time to transfer the cases over and for them to then actually accept the cases and get them in the system and the docket. So I just wanted to make the council aware of that date might end up having to be pushed in some way, form, or fashion. Or you guys may need to work out a way to work it out. But I'm sure the Lake County Clerk will contact you.
Sure, we'll hear from them. Any other comments? Joe, anything to add?
Nothing at all.
Okay. Hearing all their comments, this is not open to the public time. This is a first reading of an ordinance. Madam Clerk Treasurer, call the roll call, please.
Sure. Councilman Span. Councilman Hardaway.
Yes.
Councilman Minchuck.
Yes.
Councilman Usulek.
I abstain.
Councilman Pett.
And my reason for abstaining is I remember when the court was doing very well. The Democratic Party, which I was a part of, fought to bring that court into Maryville along with Judge Paris, who kept the economy flowing above the water. And I will commend Judge Velasco for doing a good job and trying to keep the court going. And if we do abolish it, I hope sometimes it can come back in the near future. That is my opinion, and thank you.
Councilman Pettit.
Yes.
Councilman White.
Abstain. Really wanna say no. Can I change that to a no instead of abstain?
Yeah, you may. Show vote. So we have five yes.
Are you gonna let me vote tonight?
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. President Bella.
I, I vote yes.
Five yes, one abstention, and one vote no.
Motion carries. Thank you all. Moving on tonight to ordinance 22-20. It's ordinance establishing a personnel policy manual for the employees of the Town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana, entitled, "Personal Policy Manual for the Town of Maryville, and repealing all ordinances or parts thereof in conflict therewith." This is another fairly short one. Madam Clerk Treasurer, why don't you?
I think so.
It's an important one too, so let's read that one.
An ordinance establishing a personnel policy manual for the employees of the Town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana, entitled, "Personnel Policy Manual for the Town of Maryville, and repealing all ordinances or parts thereof in conflict therewith. Whereas, the Town Council of the Town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana, did originally adopt ordinance number 1402, the same being an ordinance established a personnel policy for the Town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana, and its employees. And whereas, the Town Council of the Town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana, has reviewed the above-mentioned existing personnel policy for the Town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana, as set forth in the town code. Whereas, the Town Council of the Town of Maryville, Indiana, Lake County, Indiana, has been advised by town administrative staff that a total revision needs to be undertaken concerning the existing personnel policy for the Town of Maryville, Indiana, Lake County, Indiana, as set forth in the town code within the town. And whereas, the Town Council of the Town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana, has determined that it is necessary and advisable to totally revise the existing personnel policy for the Town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana, as set forth in the town code. And whereas, the Town Council of the Town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana, having reviewed the relevant town code sections and all applicable law, now concurs that it is advisable, necessary, and in the best interest of the residents of the Town of Maryville, that replacement be made of the town code pertaining to a total revision of the existing personnel policy for the Town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana, as set forth in the town code, and that by ordinance of a new personnel policy manual be adopted and entitled personnel policy for the Town of Maryville. Now therefore be ordained by the Town Council of the Town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana. Section one, that the Town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana, with ordinance number 14-02, shall here be repealed in its entirety upon passage and adoption of this ordinance. Section two, that the Town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana, hereby adopts a new personnel policy and procedure manual, being entitled personnel policy for the Town of Maryville, for the town which is attached hereto as exhibit A. Section three, that all existing town code sections and ordinances or parts thereof in conflict with the provisions of this ordinance are hereby deemed null, void, and of no legal effect and are specifically repealed. Section four, that if any section, clause, provision, or portion of this ordinance shall be held to be invalid or unconstitutional by any court of competent jurisdiction, such decision shall not affect any other section, clause, provision, or portion of this ordinance. Section five, that this Town Council declares an emergency and that this ordinance shall take effect and be in full and force and effect from and after its passage by the Town Council of the Town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana pursuant to and in conformance with the law.
Motion to approve.
Second.
The motion by Mr. Hardaway, the second by Mr. Pettit, for approval of ordinance 22-20, which is the adoption of the Town of Maryville Personnel Policy Manual for the Town of Maryville. Discussion? Kelly, you wanna read this into the record?
No.
Kathy, would you approach the podium, please, in case there's any questions or other discussion? Maybe just explain the process. You and your team went through the old.
We did. Good evening. We did. We were given the task of revamping our personnel policy. So what we did was we gave a very old policy a facelift. So we went page by page. We made corrections to anything that was outdated. We added some new things.
There was a lot of things that needed to be updated, I take it right, when I looked at the old one?
Yeah.
Right, okay. Any other discussion by the council?
Rich, we didn't, we didn't talk about this in the committee, but it goes without saying, are we going to, we're going to distribute a copy of this to all the employees and have them sign off? That includes the Clerk Treasurer's office and the town court? Even though- Even though they're elected officials, they can do, in the past, we've had the elected official at least send the town manager a memo, Pat, that they will adhere to the town's personnel policy. Now, I believe the civilian police, Kostas, they, do they follow your SOPs?
Now they do.
Now they do? Okay.
Given that question, I have a question. And your new amended policy, did you, because the last policy did not include the Clerk Treasurer's office with regard to certain sections, did you, was it in intent and effect that the Clerk Treasurer's office would have to adhere to all the policies in the personnel manual?
Yes.
Okay. Just for the record. I know, I know. Just, just for the record, I have spoken with my attorney, and I disagree with it. I will adopt the portions of the personnel manual that are relative to all town employees, but there are certain portions of it that do not apply to the Clerk Treasurer's office, never have in the past, and by statute, I would say do not apply now. And that's the legal opinion of my attorney.
But just to have you participate a little bit would be a great improvement, Kelly. Thank you.
Oh, we participate completely.
Okay.
We.
Any other discussion?
We just hire our own.
Mr. President, I do have a question for Clerk Treasurer. So with them changing the policy manual, if there is a challenge to that policy manual because of your office and you see things that you think that probably should be specific to only what you do or specific to what the rest of the town do, so if there's a challenge to that, does this still work then? Or is, how, how, well, maybe I'm talking to the wrong person. Sorry. Joe?
Yeah, what do you mean by a challenge, I guess?
Well, because I'm thinking that she said that there are certain portions that she can look at in here.
I'd like to, I'd like to review your written legal opinion from her attorney, and we'd see if we agree or not. If we agree to disagree, then if we have a conflict, there's going to have to be some type of resolution.
Sure.
I don't think there's any case law in the books, though, where a clerk is challenged in town or a town is challenged, challenged a clerk treasurer whereby that there's some case law out there regarding that, specifically on a personnel policy law.
Sure, sure.
And that, there may be, I'm not sure if there is case law out there, however, the statute makes the Clerk Treasurer's office an independent office as an elected official. And part of my duties is to prescribe how our employees are hired and how they are paid, and to be able to hire my own employees and not have to go through the HR department. We do adhere to the policies, the personnel policies, in terms of time off, police checks, drug policy, all of that. So there's not very much difference in, but there are other towns and, of course, other cities that have their own, the Clerk Treasurer's office, the judge have their own personnel policy. They adopt portions of the city's policy or the town's policy, but they have their own sections that are added to the policy, and then that's their policy. And so that, that was, would be my intent. I don't think it's going to be anything that you guys are going to have a problem with when we see it.
Not at all, so.
Again, I just, in my former capacity, George, George Paris and John Patalis sent me a memo. They were going to adhere to the personnel policy, Rick, when you were on the council the first time, so.
I agree.
That's the only reason the question comes up, Kelly.
What I gave you, sixty-one pages, and a lot of hours of work went into that, you'd be, in my opinion, just wasting time to write something different if most of it will work for your personnel.
Ninety-five percent.
We're really just giving you a gift and saying, well, here, here's a great start.
Ninety-five percent. I don't, I don't think we're going to have, right.
In the building.
What Sean, just to speak to what Sean just said, in the past, it was easy for them to sign off on that because the past policy still allowed both the judge and the clerk treasurer to have autonomy when it came to hiring and managing their personnel. So that's the only issue.
Anything else from the council? Thank you, Kathy.
Call for the vote, Mr. President.
Call for the vote. Madam Clerk Treasurer, call the roll for ordinance 22-20, the establishment of our new personnel policy.
Councilman Spann.
Yes.
Councilman Hardaway.
Yes.
Councilman Minchuck.
Yes.
Councilwoman Yuzlak.
Yes.
Councilman Pettit.
Yes.
Councilman White.
Yes.
And President Bella.
Yes.
Seven in favor.
Seven in favor. Motion carries. Moving on tonight to resolutions. We have resolution 22-53. It's a resolution authorizing and approving the appointment of appraisers and acquisition of certain real estate and all matters related thereto.
So moved.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Pettit, second by Mr. Minchuck, to approve resolution 22-53. This is in reference to the 22078, is it Avenue? Yes. Approximately .56 acres and 7706 Adam Street, approximately 0.15 acres. Anything else to add, Mr. Pettit?
No.
Any other questions by the council? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, Mr. Pettit. Moving on tonight to resolution 22-54. It's a similar resolution authorizing the purchase and approving appointment of appraisers and acquisition of certain real estate and all matters related thereto.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Minchuck. Is there a second, Mr. Pettit?
Yes, second.
Second by Mr. Pettit. This is the property at 7809 Madison Street, approximately 1.564 acres. Any questions or comments on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Resolution 22-55. It's a resolution authorizing an approval of appointment of appraisers and acquisition of certain real estate and all matters related thereto. This is for 7809 Madison, .71 acres.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Pettit, second by Mrs. Yuzlak, for approval of resolution 22-55. So, Pat, just for the attendees, explain what we're doing with this property we're purchasing or going.
These are three adjacent parcels to the property that the town bought last year. The expectation, anticipation is, is that on this land, in the next few years, we will see a town center constructed. The town center would be the new home for the town government. We would look to entice, bring in commercial development as well as business development. So think of Valparaiso downtown, think of Crown Point downtown, where you have a good mix of commercial retail, restaurant. And the thought here is that in creating a town center, we now establish a place for Maryville to congregate and recreate and further a town image. It'll take some time, but gathering and marshaling the land is the first step.
Right. This is really some future planning for the town, basically.
Correct.
Will this be included, then, in our long-term plan that we're going to do? Part of it?
Yes, yes, it will. I'm sure that it'll be a feature of that plan.
Oh, very good. Any other discussion from the council? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I have no idea. Item 10, the American Rescue Plan AP voucher. Do we have a voucher? We do.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have, for this evening, the amount of vouchers, $24,304.19, and we've already paid out of that $1,975. Motion to approve this voucher.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Hardaway, the second by Mr. Pettit, for approval of the American Rescue Plan Act accounts payable voucher. Anything to add, Kelly?
No.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Border zoning appeals and large gathering actions. We do have one petitioner. Mr. Reardon, are you filling in for Sheila tonight?
Yes, I have the lofty responsibility. I'll do my best. The document reads as follows. The applicant is Tony Steele. Tony Steele is here on a request of or for a large gathering permit, St. Savva Serb Fest. The purpose is a church fundraiser. The location, 9191 Mississippi Street. The dates of the large gathering, Friday, July 29, 2022, Saturday, July 30, 2022, and Sunday, July 31, 2022. The times, Friday, July 29, 2022, noon to midnight, Saturday, July 30, 2022, to noon to midnight, and then Sunday, July 31, 2022, noon to 10:00 p.m. Ms. Schein's comments are as follows. Event will be held Friday and Saturday, July 29 and 30, 2022, from 12:00 noon to 12:00 midnight, and Sunday, July 31, 2022, from 12:00 noon to 10:00 p.m. Event is held to raise funds for the church. Approximately 1,000 will be the maximum amount of people allowed to attend per day, which will be limited by the Maryville Police, who will be on-site. There will be two portable water facilities. There will be six male and six female toilets available, which will be maintained by St. Savva Church custodians. There will be 25 trash containers, which will be maintained by the custodial staff. 1,000 on-site parking spaces will be available and accessible from paved public streets. No parking from surrounding property owners will be used. Entertainment will be provided by tamburka, kanafa singers, solo dancers, and American band. Security will be provided by off-duty Maryville officers.
Motion to approve, Mr. President.
Second.
We have a motion to approve by Mr. Pettit, the second by Mrs. Yuzlak. Is the petitioner here? Is Tony here? Anyone here from the church? No?
No, I don't see anybody.
Any other discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Pat.
Thank you.
Any old business before us tonight?
Mr. President, you and I discussed at the job fair, and I'm going to let Pat chime in. We had a board put together, and I just wanted to show everybody, the residents and some of the council members, a lot of these folks, we've had this longstanding debate and discussion about tax abatement.
It's, it's over there, too, Sean.
Oh, is it? Oh, it's up on that board? Okay, then I don't need to hold this up like that.
Well, you can to point to it.
Margie, can you help me?
Yes.
A lot of these companies have come in and come back to the job fair after we granted them tax abatement. Again, one of those criterias is meeting a goal of 10% Maryville hires, if possible. So you've got Chicago Magnesium, Bozak Motor Group received. At one point, Albany's Candy Company got a tax abatement from us. Domino's Pizza did not. Who else do we have on here? Trying to look real quick and run through these. Keo Mechanical, the Midwest Truck and Auto Parts, Modern Forge.
Quality Pasta.
Polycon Industries, Precision Turbo and Engine, Quality Pasta. All these folks were at the job fair. Pat, I'll let you take over on the numbers for the job fair, which was a huge, huge success. And all of the staff of the HR department, the economic development department, as Steve alluded to, he helped out. Tarens, I mean, Barb just continues to hit home runs every single time with that Mike Anderson event center. I couldn't be prouder of her.
Thank you, Mr. Pettit. Second Annual Job Fair, rousing success. And of course, that's our opinion, but more importantly, that is the comments that we received the day of the event and the comments that continue to come in. Numbers, we had in the facility, and it's a large facility, once you open it up, which we did, we had well over 55 separate vendors. Fact is, like last year, we had to turn away at least 10. And this year, we took into consideration some of the recommendations from last year. For example, if you were there, you saw interview rooms set up on the basketball court. This afforded the businesses the opportunity to conduct interviews on-site. I know from conversation with two vendors that at least 30 individuals were hired on the spot and/or would be offered jobs on the spot, having utilized that interview area. Numbers are well over 600 in attendance. Quite frankly, we'll firm that number up once we have a debrief meeting soon and talk about numbers. And very important, we'll be reaching out to all the vendors and asking the vendors their experience in their own words, how we can improve on the event next year. And I, as Sean said, I can't say enough about the town. I kicked out an email that night suggesting the town take a bow, and everybody who was asked to participate without question to a man or woman department said, "Absolutely. How can we help?" So this was a total town effort and a great success. So thank you.
Yes, this is for Pat, actually. I know Sean's a great spokesman here. I made a statement about the tax abatement.
Sure.
And I just want to know, with the tax abatement for those individuals that we gave the tax abatements to or the companies, how many jobs? I need to know that. Because just to say that, you know, because we gave them that, and we don't know the number of jobs they produce, it kind of leaves a gap.
We'll be getting that information, though, from these companies.
Oh, yeah, but I was just saying, it was just sold as like, this is why we just gave these people tax abatements and stuff, but I'm not seeing the numbers behind them. It's good that they're doing it, but I still need to see the numbers.
Councilman.
Again, they have to, they have to report, Leonard. When we grant someone a tax abatement and they fill out that statement of benefits, that's a state of Indiana form that we have adopted through our ordinance. And so they fill that out, they put their name on it, they sign it. That's a legal document.
Sure.
They are required, once it's granted, and they turn that back into the state of Indiana, they're supposed to give a compliance form to Pat every year that say they, "I am in compliance with the statement of benefits. I did, in fact, hire 10 people. I do have a payroll of $500,000," or whatever the numbers are. They have to do that by state law, not only Maryville ordinance. That's a state requirement. So they can get in trouble with the state if they don't do it.
My question's then is for Pat here.
It'll be Pat and Angie moving forward.
Pat, do you have those numbers?
We are compiling those numbers now, and we will present those numbers to the council through committee at the next meeting.
Do you have them right now?
They're, they're not complete.
Okay. All right, that's, that's, that's fine. Thank you.
I think bottom line is job well done by everybody involved. Appreciate all the effort put into it. I know Al Bernice had their entire HR department there. That's how serious they took it. And they were interviewing people right on the spot.
Well, you know, one, one company, I think it was called Nexus, actually, I was kind of discussing the graffiti thing around here, and they offered to send some of their employees out to assist the town.
That's great.
And getting some of that grime off the place, so.
Mr. Bella, if I might add one quick thing, at least two, maybe three companies who were in attendance have reached out and are wanting to lease the facility for their own job fair.
Nice.
And we'll be reporting out on that soon.
Costa, do we have any good candidates who applied or wanted to apply for police officer positions?
We had a few. As of right now, we're on an emergency hire.
Right.
It's due to the, but we had some good ones. We had a lot also apply for the civilian position for the secretary, so it was pretty successful.
Okay. Explain what an emergency hire is for the audience, please.
Sure. An emergency hire is basically hiring an officer from another agency that's already gone through the Indiana Law Enforcement Academy and is also in perf, which is the Public Employees. R-. Public Employees Retirement Fund. And given the new trend, it seems that there have been a lot of musical chairs within the departments throughout the county and the state, and it's not beneficial to hire somebody or it's not cost effective for us to hire somebody that hasn't been through the academy. So we pretty much get other officers that are ready to go. That way they only have a shortened FTO period and they're ready to go out on the street.
Thank you. Any other old business before us tonight? New business, is there any new business tonight? Moving on to public comment, please come up to the podium, state your name and address for the record. We allow three minutes for public comment, and please comment on the agenda for tonight's meeting.
Whatever you want.
Uh-oh.
Nick.
Hi, Nick Cavades, from the Maryville Chapter 78, based in Phase 4 of the housing. I just wanted to, once again, thank you for passing the proclamation for HEPA's 100th anniversary. We were founded exactly 100 years ago today, mainly to battle the discrimination and bigotry and harassment from the Ku Klux Klan, and to eventually assimilate Greek and Cypriot immigrants into American society and American culture, and to teach them and educate them on those very documents that are on the wall. Fast forward 100 years, and we're third, fourth, fifth generation Greeks now, and Philhellenes, you don't have to be Greek to be a member of the Order of HEPA. And we're just doing the best we can to make our communities a better place to live. We do our best in Maryville, we have six housing units, we have 500 people on the waiting list to get into our housing, and we just started the investigation phase to build Phase 7, which would be eventually, hopefully, would go next to Phase 6, which is right next to the Greek Orthodox Church here in Madison. I just want to let the town council and the residents of Maryville know that you have our unwavering commitment to continue the best we can with the resources we have to make Maryville a better place to live, to help the less fortunate, and for those who are temporarily down on their luck. So I just want to thank you once again for passing the proclamation.
Great, thank you.
As you know, my name is Gene Velasco, I am the judge of the Maryville Town Court. And as you also know, each and every one of you, including the clerk, are the defendants currently in a lawsuit that was filed by me. This action that you've taken today may very well in fact be in violation of that order, and I will seek sanctions to that effect. Now, you proposed something to the public here that is in fact not true. The court, since I've been in charge of it, started out handicapped by the fact that you passed a previous ordinance back in 2019, the day before I took office. All right, so since then, I've not been, at any point, been able to operate the court fully, all right? Notwithstanding any of that, okay, the court's generated more than half a million dollars per year without any new cases, any new transactions, anything, okay? So you are, your complaint essentially seems to be, and it has been all along, that the fact that we bring so much money in, even if it were, and at one point in 2019, before I got here, Judge Jones brought in over $900,000. Now, I agree with you that you're not getting to keep a good section of that amount of money. And that's not the court's fault, that's the state law that requires the division of each and every single dollar that comes into this court.
Right.
To be paid. So you're, basically, you should be talking to the legislature to trying to get that change, and you're not alone in that. Every town in the state of Indiana is in the same position. Now, since we're in litigation, okay, and I feel like I can share this with you, your attorney and my attorney and other people met together with the chief judge that handles the changing of cases or transferring of cases. The first thing that she advised us was that you can't close the court in a six-month period or even a year period, and she has the experience of having, having to have closed Hammond after a passage of an ordinance, and the closing of the Whiting Court. At any event, those took an extraordinary, long time to close. But what she advised us when she met with us was that if in fact we actually closed this court and deprived 36,000, 36,000 residents of a local court, that what would happen is because the youngest judicial officer at the county level, which is what would handle the cases from this court, that the cases would be transferred from Maryville to Hammond, all right? And as much as that was the case, that it is unlikely that any cases going forward would be filed in Crown Point, notwithstanding the fact that we are two and a half miles down the street. Can't be helped. I mean, that judge happens to be the youngest judge in that circuit, so she will get what she will get. But our people, for every stop sign violation, snow violation, everything would be directed to Hammond. Now, that includes our police officers, who will have to then take all their stuff to be foul, you know, the misdemeanors, obviously, not the felonies. So don't think that you are doing any great share of help to the residents of the, of the town.
Finish up, Gene, please.
I'm sorry?
You're only three minutes.
Okay, I understand, but your clock just never works since you put it up. At any, at any event. Ah, yeah, as you know, I really don't trust you, so it doesn't make any difference. But anyway, my final, my final, yeah, well, there you go. My final conclusion is this, is that, you know, I am flabbergasted that you, neither one, not, not any one of you had the nerve to send me a proposed copy of the ordinance you were going to pass today. Now, it's not like you don't know where I live or where my office is, none of that. So, you know, I understand how you, this is political, you do what you gotta do. I'll do what I gotta do, and we'll see where it goes, all right?
Thank you, Judge.
Thank you so much for your time.
Like I said, it's not personal, sir, it's mathematics.
I'm not saying it to you personally either, I'm just saying to you, it'll end wherever it needs to end, all right?
That's fine.
All right.
Thank you, Gene.
You're welcome.
I'm Ms. Arch to 01 East 68th Place, Judge Velasco. I don't know if he's using the term "you" as singular or plural, but when he said, "I don't trust you," it's probably the most honest and most beautiful thing I've actually heard in this room in a long time.
That could be slanderous, sir. And if you're going to be slanderous to the council, you'll be asked to not comment anymore.
Oh, I have a First Amendment right to pretty much say whatever I want.
No, we have a civility, we have a civility ordinance in effect here, sir.
Really?
Yes.
Okay, well, the civility thing says that you need to ask permission of the president to speak, so thank you. And you're not a town councillor, so thank you.
I speak on behalf of the town council, sir, thank you.
Go ahead, Brian, please.
You start your clock.
He's got his phone working, the clock's not working, sir, we'll let you know when the time's up.
Thank you.
You can trust us.
Oh, so we're talking about spending a lot of money for watering flowers and whatnot, but we're not talking about spending money on public safety. We're not talking about spending money on our police and fire, who their emergency calls are just going through the roof. What are we doing to slow that down? What are we doing to beautify North Maryville? We don't have any flowers up there, I didn't see any going there. But to be honest with you, the buzz of the town is the shooting that occurred, and it's over there in the 4th Ward by the cemetery off of Wickham, and that seems to be a shooting gallery, and it seems to be a problem. When are we going to start tackling that head-on? When are we going to start getting funds? Assistant chief talking about getting more officers. We need to start thinking about how are we going to get money to get more officers and to offer the actual basic public safety that the town residents need. We need cops doing their thing, we need fire people doing their thing, way more than we need flowers looking pretty alongside a road, because people want to be able to come out of their house, they want to be able to go grocery shopping, they want to be able to go to the parks and enjoy those things. You can't do that when there are shootings and people are dying. How do we justify spending money on dog parks that no one asks for, on flowers that no one asks for, when we need to help our public safety people? We should be applauding them, we should be giving them trophies every month. Think about it, 4,600 calls, that's like a call every 10 minutes of every day of every month. That's, these guys, thank you, police, thank you, fire. That's what we should be worrying about, not flowers.
Sabina Miller, 3120 West 75th Place, Maryville. So I came across some information that indicated that the town of Cedar Lake actually publishes before any of their town council meetings or whatever, the full agenda with all documents. And I would like to see that happening in Maryville, because, I mean, when we come in here, there is a lot of stuff, I'm just shaking my head, basically taking notes, saying, got to watch the video again, couldn't really understand or hear everything or process everything. So I think that would be an awesome way for us to see if we can do the same thing. And if you have any questions, the person I actually heard it from was Randy Niemeyer, who I think was over that for the longest time, he's running for a different office. The other part, okay, a little bit on the town court, I actually thought this had long happened, because I remember hearing about that a few years back, and I thought this was all done, to what the judge said. I guess I'm an outstanding citizen, because I didn't even know that there was a town court here where you come for tickets or whatnot. So I don't think it's impacting 36,000, it may impact a few. But I'm, personally, as a resident, I'm happy that we are consolidating to save some money. Then I want to thank you, President Bella and Matt Legg, for taking care of that storm water ditch. I can't even tell you how many residents came to me and were excited about that this was happening, so that's a plus. On the areas, I know there are some areas, I live not too far from where this just happened last night, okay? I mean, I'm just down the road from there. But why don't we think about, instead of, you know, more police, I do want more police, but we can't have enough police at every intersection. But why don't we look into the expense of maybe in some strategic areas, some blue light cameras? Because this corner or this area is a pretty prominent one where things happen, so, but, you know. The other thing I wanted to bring up was sometimes the timeliness of things. I know when the Marine Corps was asking for an event to be approved, it just happened basically, whatever, four days before the actual event. This tonight, the same thing, I remember taking the invitation from the church and posting it on Maryville Community, saying, hey, guys, there's an event coming up, and that was like in May, so they've been advertising since May. Why do we actually wait till the last minute of that? And that's the same feeling I had on the new personnel policy that is supposed to take, start on August the 1st, did I hear that right? But yet there's still some questions unresolved. So I was just thinking, maybe something like this could be tackled much earlier so that there's time to sort out everything. And what if the town actually voted against an event? Then they have everything in place, but it could not really be stopped. So, and I think that's all I have, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Of course, I know public safety means a lot in this area, and when it comes to public safety, that means everyone getting home and being safe around their families. I have spoken to Patrick Reardon on the phone, he's been communicating with me, but I just feel like there might be a glitch. And what I mean by that is, he asked me for some information. I gave him all the information that he asked for, and I have more information. And me as being a, I live right here in Maryville, Indiana, as a citizen, I feel like that I should be respected also, because COVID is real. And I've told him multiple times that I have the solution. I have the solution, and he asked me, we had a conversation earlier, and he said, well, why hasn't it, why doesn't anyone in Maryville know about this? I said, well, maybe it's for me to give him the information, so he can go through it and see how important it is. So me as being, living right here in Maryville, Indiana, I think that we need to take this situation a lot more serious, because I don't want to feel like an African American and not being heard, and I have information that can help everybody's family right here in Maryville, because COVID is serious. So what I'm asking is, I gave you, Mr. Patrick Reardon, all the information that you need, and I told you, if you need any more, I can get you all the documents that you need, and I told you that you can make a great impact right here in the town of Maryville for the solution that I have for this technology.
Okay, so, the comments really should be pertaining to the meeting agenda tonight.
It is. Safety, sir.
Really not about buying, we're not, we didn't talk.
I'm not trying to buy anything.
COVID machines.
I'm not trying to sell you anything, I'm just letting you know, because you also stated a couple weeks ago, you would want, you wanted to investigate it also.
That's right.
So I would like to, I would like him, hopefully, to send the information over to you, also, because I have, anything you want to know about this information, this technology, I have it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any other public comment? Seeing none, announcements tonight, national night out, August 2nd, as we talked about, at the Dean and Barbara White Community Center. Our next town council meeting is on August 9th at 6:30.
I got one announcement, Mr. President.
Mr. Hardaway.
The Boys and Girls Club has opened registration for their after-school program that starts August the 17th. They are going through Pierce School, Pierce Middle School one more time, and it's open up to 50 students.
Okay.
Mr. President, due to night out, Sheila, we have a workshop on Wednesday, the 3rd, for the Plan Commission at 6:30, and Sheila said we have petitions. So Plan Commission on Wednesday night.
At what time?
Motion to adjourn.
Madam President.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Aye, aye.
The 3rd. A week from tomorrow, a week from tomorrow.